This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiorscitizen.com today.
I just look at Kristin Everett and when she looks over, I smile. I don't have her sign anything. It keeps her guessing.
Well, she's guessing that you're creepy.
No guessing to it, Sharon. She knows me.
I'm sure the increased spin speed of the earth.
It is six thirty now.
All right, we're going to call the meeting to order. First up, before we, no, the second, first up, before we move to adopt the agenda, we need to amend the agenda G three to return to closed session for personal and legal matters. If you've done that at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. So first by Troy.
Second.
Second by Kaylin, all those in favor? And that's seven to zero. Now, if you would join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. Someone? First by Rick.
Second.
Second by Darren, all those in favor? And that passes seven to zero. Excuse me. Next up is our recognition. First up, Dr. Tomlinson.
Well, if it pleases the board, I'd like to recognize this month's classified employee of the month, and would like to announce that this is also brought to you by the Excelsior Springs Hospital, who is now our official sponsor of our classified employee of the month program. And this month, we have a picture up here for you. We presented this to Melanie Shockley. She was awarded for her diligent work over the course of the last three years to improve and expand the adult education program up at the Career Center. While fighting through a pandemic and the closure of enrichment classes, she still improved program marketing, adjusted tuition to meet industry standards. She actually doubled the number of students enrolled and created a new system of record keeping. She's instituted program tuition evaluations, built many relationships and agreements with area hospitals and centers of care. And she also maintains certifications for all of our programs. And we wanted to recognize Melanie Shockley as this month's classified employee of the month.
All right, next up is student recognitions, Dr. Bullmore.
Yes, if it pleases the board, we're going to start recognizing students at different levels throughout the year at our board meetings. So for this first meeting, we're going to recognize Dr. Kristen Everett, StuCo sponsor Ian Birch, and a couple of StuCo executive board members Kyra Davidson and M. Rice. And they're going to come up and talk a little bit about the exciting things that our ESHS StuCo is doing this year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kyra Davidson. I'm the residing president for the 2022 to 2023 school year. As of right now, we have around 140 members, but only 70 that are currently really active within the program. This year, we're introducing a four system of committees. So we have our spirit and pride committee ran by Kelsey Coleman, who was our communications director, as well as Regan Bishop, who is our sophomore representative. They oversee things for school spirit as well as the dance for the homecoming green. Then there's also Building and Grounds, which is led by M. Rice, as well as Reese Odell. Would you like to speak about your committee?
Sure. So I'm also the treasurer. The Building and Grounds Committee does activities fair. We are hosting a pancake breakfast that we'll talk about in a minute, and Chuck-a-Duck and Teddy Bear Toss fundraisers.
Community relations is led by Matea Figueroa, who's our senior representative, as well as Kaylee Bell, who is our sophomore representative. They basically oversee anything dealing with our community, and we're doing a lot of more community outreach programs after COVID, just because we want to get everyone involved again. So when it comes to homecoming, they deal with the parade. There's also the social committee, which is led by Paige Crowley, my vice president, and Madeline Andreessen, who is the freshman representative, sophomore. They oversee for right now the coronations for both homecoming and court warming, as well as our Tiger passports. So Tiger passports are something new that we're introducing this year. Hold it up for everyone. It's basically just a system to help kids get more like involved with activities at the school and boost school spirit. So for each activity that students attend, they can receive a stamp. We also offer stamps every Friday for students who wear their black and gold and show off their tiger spirit. So certain activities are worth more points for each stamp, like girls' activities that we're trying to get more people involved in, as well as like theater, choir and band concerts are going to be worth the most amount of points just because we really want to get kids involved in visiting those kind of things. But it's a new introduction. We sold them for $3 to boost funds for the student council, and we're going to use them for a bunch of things throughout the year. We do have some upcoming events.
That I will talk about. So this year's homecoming theme is Homecoming 2022, the Netflix original. Grade levels are working to decorate their floats and hallways with inspiration from various Netflix TV shows. I know the juniors are focusing on Outer Banks, which is kind of a beachy theme.
Seniors are Stranger Things, which I'm hoping you guys have seen. I know the freshmen are doing Umbrella Academy, and sophomores are the Is It Cake Show? Hopefully, you've seen those.
Flyers and signup sheets for the parade are being passed out tonight and tomorrow, and a community pancake breakfast, which the Building and Grounds Committee is hosting, will be held five to eight AM on September 30th. And it's open to members of the community. They can buy tickets for $10 and come have pancakes at Tiger Stadium with us. And that will be a fundraiser for student council. And then members of exec board and other members who qualified will be attending Northwest Student Council districts on October 10th. Districts is kind of, it's a social.
It's like a really great networking opportunity. You get to meet other student, you get to meet like other student councils, and you attend little workshops about different things that your program can do to help with either your community or your council. We decided the members who weren't exec board that would be attending, based on student council points that have been amassed up to now. So for every meeting you attend, it's seven points. And we offer morning and afternoon meetings to help kids who aren't involved in other things, as we'd hope our student council is. And so the more things you attend outside of school, you can receive more points. So all of our highest rankers and the kids who we thought would benefit from the leadership opportunity, we chose to go. I think it's 19, is it 19 total who are going?
Any questions?
What's this Chuck-a-Duck? Is that what you call the basketball?
So at a basketball game, people will call me out.
They'll have an opportunity to buy the ducks as they come in. And then at halftime, we'll set up a ring in the middle, and they get prizes that they. Throw it.
They'll throw it from the stands. And whoever makes it in gets a prize.
Is that kind of what you're saying?
Any other questions?
What's the pancake breakfast cost?
$10 per person.
On the 30th of this month?
Yep.
What was the time on that?
RSVP.
I'll be out of town. There's your first donation.
Cool. Any other questions?
Any questions? Thank you guys very much. Appreciate the presentation. All right. Next up is our September MSBA Delia Report, Mr. McCann.
I will talk with Brent.
Is Brent on here? He retired?
He's retired.
Who's the new guy? Let's find out. I bet he had to throw one.
Yeah.
A little bit, a little bit.
Board report for the month of September. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the release of this year's state assessment data. The preliminary results released by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education show some improvement over the prior year, but state totals have not yet reached pre-pandemic levels. English Language Arts had mixed results by grade level. Math and science scores increased in all grades and courses, while social studies showed slight decreases in proficiency. Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven had this to say about the results. Districts and charter schools across the state continue to face unique challenges during the 21-22 school year, while working hard to focus on the well-being and academic success of students. Nothing about this past school year was typical. We must remain vigilant in educating our students, and I urge everyone to review the data through an informational lens, using these key takeaways to shape how state and local resources are best deployed to support ongoing student success. The COVID-19 pandemic continued to cause learning disruptions, periods of quarantine, and chronic absenteeism of both students and staff during the past year. Meanwhile, the state's Blue Ribbon Commission, charged with developing strategies to address teacher recruitment and retention challenges in Missouri, is continuing its work. The commission held a public hearing in August to gather input on teacher shortage issues. Among those testifying before the commission was Tipton art teacher and Pettis County R-12 School Board member Sean Harris.
Salaries are so low that new and veteran teachers are having to find, oftentimes, not always, a second job in order to make ends meet, in order to support themselves or their families. In April of this year, a survey came out and found Missouri was 50th out of 50 states when it came to teacher salaries and pay. Because of that, we are seeing people leave this field. We are seeing people not enter this field because of low pay. It's difficult to find substitutes when teachers leave and fill those gaps that need to be filled. Sometimes when those teachers find a second job after a long day of working, they go to their second job, which takes away from time with their family, takes away time from themselves to have the opportunity to wind down, and that's not fair.
The statewide survey of Missouri teachers, principals, and superintendents, conducted by the commission, showed strong support for increasing the base salary for teachers, for wellness days, and for student loan forgiveness. The Blue Ribbon Commission is scheduled to present its recommendations to the State Board of Education in October. There's still time to register for the 2022 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators, to be held in Kansas City November 3rd through 5th. This year's conference will include three general sessions, including keynote speaker Olympian Jackie Joyner-Kersey, more than 90 concurrent sessions, a one-day education expo, and much more. Registration information is available on the MSBA website. You also can register to attend the 2022 Midwest School Safety Summit, to be held November 2nd and 3rd in Kansas City. This event is designed to provide information for those who govern and work in K-12 schools, colleges, and universities, as well as law enforcement officials and others working with MSBA member districts. The Midwest School Safety Summit is presented by MSBA's Center for Education Safety and the Safe and Sound Schools Organization. On a personal note, this is my final board report program as I am retiring from MSBA after 35 years. It has been an honor to work for such an outstanding organization and to support the work of school boards and school board members throughout the state. And so, thanks for allowing me to share some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right, anything further?
No, sir.
All right, next up Superintendent's Report, Dr. Hux.
All right, two quick items here. Just a reminder that we have our upcoming tax rate hearing, our annual hearing. It's at 5:30 on Monday, September 26th at Central Office, not at this location. And just our initial enrollment for the year, it's comparable to this time last year. And nothing significant note, other than, like I said, it's steady with what we had last year.
All right. Moving right along to discussion item one, Career Center Grants, Mr. Ruby.
I'm excited about the Chuck-a-Duck. Bad time at the Ruby household. So I have a couple of grants I want to talk about and a couple of other supplemental funding things I wanted to discuss at the end. The first is the FY23 Area Career Center Construction Grant.
This is one that we already submitted an application for. It was due at the beginning of September. And it's a 50-50 matching grant. There was $5.5 million total allowed for the entire grant. I'm not, they didn't really say, it was going to be based on how many people applied and who all went for it. So I can't really say how much of that we're going to get. We decided to go ahead and put in everything that was in our long-range facilities plan, you know, that first one. So just kind of a quick reminder, a couple of the things that we had on stage three for the, for the Career Center. We could definitely want to knock out some of those projects with, if we get, depending on what we get for the funding. We should know back here in the next couple of weeks if we, if we got anything or in how much. The one, the one kind of caveat with this grant is whatever we get, we'll have to move pretty fast on because the money has to be spent by the middle of May. So can't really do any big, big projects with this money. But there is also a lot of things that we can get done to improve the current Career Center, to add some upgrades and some finishing things. And then the, the key thing with it is whatever money would be used would touch all of the areas of the Career Center. So that'd be a kind of, I think, a bonus for us. It's not like we're putting in a new garage for a vehicle or something like that. So it was going to impact everybody that attends the Career Center. So that's the first grant. The second one is the MAKO Grant, and this is from funds from the American Rescue Plan through ARPA. And so this one's a 75-25 matching grant with the most that we can, they can give out for that would be $400,000. The nice thing about this one is, is we don't have to, we have plenty of time. Money doesn't have to be spent until December of '26. So we have some time to kind of regroup, kind of depend on how much we get from this first grant, and then make some plans moving forward from there. And then I threw in some, we got through in the, that next one. We met, or we talked with IDS, Dr. Hux and I did, about potential add-ons. Because we're kind of running out, we're kind of tight space right now at the Career Center and what that would look like. And while the, while they're still handing out a lot of money, this might be a good time to look to expand. So on that first one up top, they, in addition to the facility that's already there, it wouldn't be directly adding on, but that little space, oh, where those two white, pretty solid white blocks are, those would be new additions. We wouldn't add both of them. They would be, we'd pick whichever, kind of decide how much space we need and where it would be the easiest to build. So that would be where that, you know, where the backside of that parking lot is, maybe on the corner of that, there's that little storage shed. So there's some, a couple of different options. Dr. Hux and I went back and asked if we could move that, the structure that would be next to it, adjacent to the right, if we could move that off of a little bit, and then we could reroute that sidewalk that's right there. So those are some possible ways to expand. So I know Dr. Bullmore did some work a couple of years back about expanding with a welding program. That's still a very popular program and a high-knee one that I think it'd still be an easy slam dunk for us to fill pretty quickly. There's a lot of other different opportunities to, to expand. I just think right now, with Northland getting that huge grant that they got and expanding, I think it's our time that we need to start looking to expand so that we can kind of stay relevant and keep up with them. Because I, I'll put, and Mark can tell you this, we have better teachers than they do, and we offer a great program. And I want to keep, the idea is to grow this and hopefully keep adding on so that we can offer twice as many programs as we have now. Because I, in 20 years of education, nothing's been more supportive than CTE education right now. So like now is kind of the time to kind of get after it and look, look for ways and to find ways to expand and identify which programs we want to add. And then lastly, with the Gears money, there was some, the governor put aside some of that for, to help reimburse parents for, for costs when their kid goes to the Career Center. So we got roughly $25,000 that we, that for our kids. So, and this includes kids that qualify for CTE classes through the high schools as well, too, like your fact classes and your business classes. So any of those expenses, we can reimburse parents, so like costs for scrubs, equipment, tools, uniforms. When they go out for our Skills USA competitions, if they need a new suit jacket, we can use that money. So the idea is, I was going to make a, put a deadline at the middle of October and see how much money we have, and then kind of disperse based on kind of percent-wise. I was going to keep a little bit of money back just so that at the end of the year, because we do have those competitions coming up. So it's still fair for those kids that didn't put anything in, they need to go get a suit jacket for a competition. We still have a little bit of money left. So, so the only kind, it's kind of a paying, nothing can be easy. So they, they submit us their receipts, and then we have to pay them out, make them a vendor, and then we send it all back in, and then the state reimburses us. So. But, I mean, that's kind of, kind of a big deal because that's a lot of money. And I know some of it, like, that's one of the things we've talked about with the Career Center peoples, how many kids kind of are turned off by some of the programs because there's some of that upfront costs that either they don't want to come up with or might be too embarrassed to ask for. So. But I like a lot of that stuff, too. There's, there's, that grant money can also be used at the end of the year. If we want to set a thing, if you get a CTE certificate, you can go out, we can meet you and get you some tools for when you're placement. So there's a lot of different ways we can use it. I think the state's going to be very flexible with how we spend this. They just want us to spend it. So I'm going to do my best to make sure that happens. So, so that's kind of a little update. I will come back to you probably in October, depending on what we get for this first grant, to kind of talk about what we, how we want to move forward with the phase two part or the second part grant. So, because a lot, a little more specifics about how we're going to use that because it's more for construction and expansion than it is updates and not things. They don't, you can't use it to buy equipment and instructional tools. So.
Been on the, the gear.
Yeah.
Parent reimbursement. But I was looking through there, it looks like we, as Excelsior School District, got 25, 26, whatever it was.
Yes, yep.
Do our sending schools get their own allotments? Because I saw Liberty had it.
So.
So we wouldn't manage that. They would do that.
Yeah, I'll send that all to them.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that 25 is for our.
For our students.
Okay.
So see, the Career Center kids, our Career Center kids and the high school kids can take advantage of that, too.
So I'd point out a couple of nice things. These two grants are dollars that could potentially come to us that were not, you know, for expansion or improvements that are in our long-range facility plan. For example, that we might have otherwise had this grant money not be available, utilized bonds or local taxpayer dollars to take care of. And hopefully instead, we'll be awarded with these grants and be able to cover some of that work. And then as Mr. Ruby also mentions, it might allow for the opportunity, depending on the funding we get, to expand potentially a welding program, for example, versus doing that with local dollars. So.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, thank you.
All right, next up, Construction.
All right. This is a presentation on our construction plan. And the agenda there is three pieces we want to go over. I want to first talk about construction itself, the financing, and then the informing voters. So if you may recall, we recently renewed our long-range facilities plan, and you see Phase One. That's the phase that we're looking at. You can see there with Lewis Elementary being the bulk of Phase One, with $8 million or so allocated to all the other buildings in the district, with the exception of Cornerstone, which is brand new, and the Career Center, which hopefully will have some grant funding. So you can go on to the next slide. So we've recently re-selected our architect, which is Inside Design Studios, and that's who we used for this previous project. Right now, it's time to re-select a construction manager of risk. So you see here a tentative schedule of, that's already began. And so we hope to bring to you in October, the selected party. You can see our current CMAR and our fellows are out here in the audience tonight. They're, they're going to submit qualifications again with the intentions of trying to win that. And we use them for Cornerstone and all those other projects, and they did a fabulous job. But this is a $35 million project, so, you know, we need to go through these processes and do things the right way. So we're going through all these again. So. So that's what we're doing most immediately. Then you see the Lewis timeline. So one of our goals is to be shovel-ready in April with Lewis. So when we look at our $35 million package, Lewis is the first aspect of it. And you can see that Inside Design's provided us a timeline, and it's broken up into design bid and build. You can see in design is happening now pretty much through the remaining 2022 year. And you'll see bidding after that, and then building starting in April. So if you go to the next slide, the main thing to take away from this is we're going to follow the same process that you followed whenever you did this project with Cornerstone and Elkhorn and that sort of thing. So packages will go out in February, but we'll submit early to subs so that they can start working with the drawings and getting all those things figured out. But the shop drawings themselves will be approved by this board in April, once the question passes. All right, the next timeline is for all the remaining projects. As I mentioned, this isn't just Lewis. There's projects happening at the childhood center and the high school and middle school in Elkhorn as well. But we're going to focus year one on Lewis Elementary, and years two and three will be the remaining projects. So that is the timeline of all the projects provided by Inside Design. The next slide talks about this current budget year. As we move forward with this, as you would expect all the time and effort we spend over the coming months designing Lewis Elementary, we will incur architectural fees, approximately 75% of those fees, which will equate to about $1.4 million this year. The district will use the capital reserves to cover this cost. You may recall, last year, we moved 90 cents into Fund Four, and then just. You may recall last year we moved 90 cents into Fund Four and then generated about $2.4 million to go into capital reserves. And so we have an estimated $5 million in capital reserves to cover this cost, so. Anything on construction before I move into the financing aspect of the presentation? Okay. So on financing, we are going to move 50 cents from Fund Three, which is the debt services fund, to Fund One, and, which is operations. It says capital up here, and I'll explain that to you in a minute. But Fund One is operations. So our goal is to take 50 cents of the $5.22 tax levy and move it from Three to One and use that 50 cents to pay principal and interest on approximately $35 million in lease purchase debt. So this is a no-tax increase tax levy question. But that's what our plan is with regards to financing. So if you go to the next slide here, you know, so you might ask, you know, what is a lease purchase? You know, for all intents and purposes, a lease purchase looks like a mortgage, walks, talks, acts like a mortgage. But school districts cannot mortgage. Instead, we lease purchase, and it's one of two mechanisms of long-term debt that school districts can use, the other one being bonds, which we utilized for Cornerstone and Elkhorn and all those jobs. So this go-around, we'll use lease purchase. They're very similar to bonds, but there's two key differences, and I'll go over those. One is the source of the fund, and the other is the security of the debt. But the source of the fund, simply for bonds, the funds come from Fund Three, debt services. These are not bonds, so it will not be Fund Three. It'll be Fund Four capital, and that Fund Four will be, money will be generated out of Fund One, operations, but it will be paid out of Fund Four instead of Fund Three. So that's one of the differences, a nominal but noticeable difference. So then you go to the next slide, and we talk about the security of debt. So school boards, as you know, have taxing authority to set a tax levy to whatever you need to, to pay your bonds, to pay your debt for bonds. With a tax, you could do that with bonds, but with lease purchase, you cannot do that. So that's the difference here. So even though we would take on debt, we don't have the ability to raise the tax levy to cover that debt because this is a lease purchase versus bonds. Now, I will say bonding capacity will continue to grow during this period of time. And at any point this board chooses, we could go to the voters and ask for bonds and convert this lease purchase debt to bonds if we ever felt the need to do so. I don't see that need ever occurring. Lease purchase mechanism is used by this school district and pretty much every other school district in the state of Missouri to one level or another. You may recall our baseball field, that's a lease purchase. You may recall the FEMA shelter we installed at Elkhorn. That was a lease purchase to cover that. So it's a pretty normal mechanism, and I don't see the need for that extra security. But just know that you could do that should you need to. Other than those two aspects, lease purchase is very similar to bonds, including how we secure the funding. So just like with bonds, we would use a company like Stiefel, and they would take the debt, they break it down into $5,000 increments and sell it off. And, but instead of called bond, being called bonds, it's called certificates of participation. And that's the main difference there. On the next slide, just like with bonds, the funding becomes available in a similar timeframe, roughly six weeks after the question passes. And so that'd be mid-May for us, and that's about the time we probably start seeing our first pay-ups from our CMAR. All right. And then, just like with bonds, you know, there's hearing notice requirements that we would fulfill, and we'll use the April Board Meeting to do that. We'll also, at that April Board Meeting, talk about our issuance plan. And what I mean by that is there'll be a $35 million availability. We may or may not want to take all of that in that moment. And there's four reasons that we consider when we make that determination. One is, what is the interest rate environment at the time? As we know, the Fed has been raising interest rates. So what will they be come April? So that's a factor. And then there's our draw schedule, which means how much money are we going to spend year one, year two, year three? So we consider that. Another one is, if we had the money and we put it in the bank, how much interest could we draw on it? So that's something you consider as well. And then what is, in fact, the final dollar amount? We have an estimated amount of $35 million. We hope that we've overestimated that a little bit. In most every one of these construction phases, we generally do. For example, with the most recent projects, we ended up with about a million more dollars than was intended to be utilized. So those are the factors we'll consider, and we'll do that in April when things are more concrete. On the next slide, you'll see a post-election financing timeline. Starts mid-April, but end of April, you'd see, just like we do with bonds, we do an S&amp;P rating call, try to get the best rating possible, get the best interest rates possible. And you'd see there in mid-May, we priced the certificates, which we would have called bonds in the past when we've done bonds. And then end of May, we would close, and then those funds would be available. So that's what the schedule looks like there. In order to do this, we have to call an election. So I will tell you, to lease purchase something does not require an election. When we did the baseball fields and the FEMA shelter and any other project we leased purchase, that does not require an election. We can lease purchase as much as we want. What does require the election is to ask the voters, can we move 50 cents from Fund Three to Fund One? We do have to ask the voters for that. And because that is a necessary component to accomplish this construction plan, we are going to have to have an election. So, next slide there. So over the next few months, there's some stuff we will need to do to get ready for this election. For example, we have to have our intentions known to the county clerk by Tuesday, January 24th. And to do this, we let them know our intent and our purpose of the election, as well as sample ballot language. With regard to ballot, which is on the next slide, we will spend November, December, and January reviewing, or drafting, reviewing, and approving ballot language. We'll work with Gilmore and Bell, who this district's worked with in the past, to help us develop that question. And our goal is to create a question that conveys the board's intent and then also clearly and transparently presents the information to the voters. I will tell you, state statute really confines how a question can look. If you go to the next slide, here's a sample ballot question from a district in our backyard, but with our information placed in it. You can't say things like "no tax increase," even though that's the case, but you can say "tax levy which is estimated to remain unchanged." So there's language you can use and can't. But at the end of the day, we'll need to inform voters about this so that they can vote with this information. And one of the ways you do that is you present information like you see on this next slide. Here's a visual of our current tax levy, which you see the operating tax levy at $3.90 now. It will change to $4.40. You'll see that it's up by 50 cents. You look at the debt service aspect of the levy, it's currently at $1.32. You'll see that that will go down 50 cents to 82 cents. And then the bottom line, the totals, you'll see that remain at 5.2272. So these are the kinds of things we'll need to let the voters know. As a school district, you know, it's imperative that we do provide that factual information to patrons so that, as I mentioned earlier, they can be informed voters. We can, as a district, campaign the question, but we can research, create, disseminate factual information. And we can also remind patrons to vote. Can't necessarily tell them to vote yes, but we can remind them the importance of voting. In this section of informing voters, you would probably imagine, just like in past elections, there'll be a non-school district campaign committee, which has already started to be developed, unaffiliated with the school district. Now, they can campaign, and they can ask to vote yes and that sort of thing, so that's occurring. If you go to the next slide, though, with all of our plans, all of our information, we need to find out what the patrons of this district think about this plan. So one of the first steps this month that we will need to take as a school district is to conduct a viability survey. We want to know if the patrons support such a plan. Because if they don't support the plan, there's no point in moving forward, right? Or if they don't support this particular plan, what do they support? We need to figure those things out. So it's also important that you use a third party in this case because you want valid data. This is a very important question. We're basing a lot of time and resources and money on this question. So it can't be questions that myself and Jared Thompson come up with in an office one day. And we hope we ask the right questions. Inevitably, every time I put out a survey with my own questions, after I start getting the answers, I realize, man, I should have asked that a little differently. So we want to use a company that can create a survey with questions that provide the data we really need to know about. And there's a couple of companies out there. Example, Creative Entourage, or Excellence K-12, the estimated cost that I recently received for all this survey work. And this is not a one-time survey. This is stuff that occurs throughout the year, but it's about $16,000, and that would be paid for out of the capital funds as well. So that's the, that we take most immediately. Now we go back to informing voters. One of the things I talked about was an unaffiliated campaign. Even though the school district will not be part of that campaign, school district employees can, on their own time, participate and be involved in this campaign. But I think it's important to remind everybody what a campaign might have in it, what it might be about. So, you know, I've been involved in a few of these, many of you as board members and patrons have as well. But these are, you know, for the most part, the main tenants of any campaign. You know, they'll raise funding, they'll do the typical voter modeling and targeting, they'll create that sense of urgency to say yes. They'll do the campaign planning that involves engagement, recruiting, volunteers, messaging, and materials development, all those other things you see there. And so these are some aspects that that campaign committee that has already started its development of. So I just wanted you to know. It's unaffiliated, but still happy to present and inform. So what might an unaffiliated campaign timeline look like? Well, if you go backwards from Election Day, which is April 4th in '23, you see here that a campaign might begin six weeks ahead of time. But you can see the dates prior to that indicate work is being done long before that, all the way at the beginning of April, which is, you know, less than a month away here, just a couple of weeks away. So you see the various stages that a campaign committee might go through before the campaign even starts. And so those are the, that's the timeline and the tenants of a campaign. So with that being said, those were the three aspects I went over, were construction, financing, and informing voters. And I know it was super boring, but it's, to me, super exciting stuff. This is a great plan, it's a solid plan, the school district's going to benefit, the city's going to benefit, students, patrons, everybody's going to benefit from this. This is going to be great for Excelsor Springs. Does anybody have any questions about any of this? The main thesis of this presentation was to let you know we've got a good, solid plan, and we're on it.
Questions? Comments?
All right.
All right, hearing no questions, thank you, sir. Next up is entertaining motion to return to closed session for legal and personnel.
Mr. President, I move to return to closed session to consider personnel matters as allowed by the revised statutes of Missouri, paragraph 610, section 21, subsections 3 and 13, and legal matters as allowed by the revised statutes of Missouri, paragraph 610, section 21, subsection 1.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kaylin. Darren?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Troy?
Yes.
Am I so?
Yes.
We don't close the open meeting, right? That's it, have a good night. Thanks for coming on.